Good afternoon, neighbors. June Margolin, Huntington Matters. Behind the camera with us today we have Dana Richter and our producer Diane Shavers off screen over there. We're bringing you another installment of our 2023 candidate interviews for the Your Choices on the Ballot. Sorry, I'm stuttering a little. Headbunch, ready for coffee. So once again, this is the very most important election. The local candidates, your town council, your receiver of taxes, your local Suffolk County legislators, they're the ones that impact your day to day life the most. That when you walk out your door, you look left, you look right, everything you see there, this is under their purview. So it's super important to get to know what your choices are. And we are interviewing all the candidates for you so that you can help make up your mind. So we have the privilege today of speaking with Teresa Mari, who is running for Huntington Town Council. And there will be four candidates on the ballot and you have to pick two out of the four, right?
Yes.
This is the first year, I think, we were talking that we have no incumbents.
That's right, we don't. Exactly, this is the first year in a long time.
Meaning no one, the two seats are being vacated and they're not running again.
Yes.
And we've never had that. So that's really interesting, makes it a little interesting, which is fun. So, all right, Teresa, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me and for taking the time to do this. I really appreciate it very much.
We love it, yeah, and the members really appreciate it too. Give us a little introduction about you, your background.
Sure, I am an attorney. And very fortunately, I have a wonderful family. I grew up in Port Jefferson originally. And my parents didn't have a lot of money, but they were wonderful, loving people. You know, I put myself through college and law school and moved to Huntington 30 plus years ago now. So, and I love it here. I started out doing more corporate work. I took a tire company public and started a tire manufacturing company. I also then went into private practice and mainly I represent children. So I represent children, victims of domestic violence. I also represent indigent clients. And I also will, I do handle divorces or my office does, I have a staff. So I've been practicing a long time, but with most of my career being involved in representing children and being an advocate for children, I decided it was time for me to do something in my community. So that's why I decided to run for town council and that's what I would like to try to do here, so.
That's excellent. All right, so we do a little civics lesson at the top. Just we don't like to assume anybody knows how the town works because it can be very complicated.
Yes.
So what is the job description of a town council person? And what is the town board exclusively responsible for?
So the town board, a town council person, there's a, there's four members plus the supervisor. And they, the town board is responsible for the laws that govern the town of Huntington. And, and the things that happen of concern in the town of Huntington, for example, your roads, whether they're being paved and your public safety. Town council also works on making sure your beaches and your parks are clean. So all of the things that happen or those types of things that happen in the town of Huntington are the responsibility of the town board to vote on and to assure that, that, like I said, our parks are clean, our beaches are clean and our roads.
They do recreation.
Recreation as well, yes.
Senior and.
Senior, right, and the governing in the town, exactly.
Right, exactly, exactly, which can be very complicated.
Yes.
All right, great. So what are some short term and long term things that you are passionate about that you'd like to accomplish during your time on the town board?
Okay, so one of the things I've, I've talked a lot about in my campaign is over development. I want to make sure that when we are doing projects in our town, that those are projects that our community is happy with, for the most part, of course. I'm not anti-development. I want to work with developers to make sure that whatever projects they decide to do or would like to do fit in the character of the community. People move to Long Island or move to Huntington because they love the beautiful community we live in. If you're in a place where there's one acre zoning, some people aren't really happy with the idea of putting big apartments, our big buildings with less zoning or multifamily dwellings in those areas. So you have to work with the community to figure out the right way to handle those things. We do need housing for our veterans and our seniors and, and our, our children who are going away to college and bringing back talents that we need. So I want to work with developers and the community to figure out where we can put that housing, how we can put that housing so it's smart and so that people are happy with it. As we've seen, anytime the community hears about developing those kinds of projects, they seem to come out against it. I also think that it's important for us to do listening type sessions, which I know that Ed Smith has started doing in Melville, and getting the community involved earlier in the process with the builders, with the towns, so that we aren't having these, some of these issues like we had at the town board A D U meeting where people came out and they were very angry. So if we can get people involved earlier, get the process started earlier, hopefully we can make some projects work on a better scale.
I agree. And then I also feel like that there's, I've talked about it in a prior interview, somebody else, but there's such a huge delay, like when someone puts in a project, a development project, the community, when it starts to actually be built, the community is rallying against the current supervisor. But in reality, that project took at least four to five years to get to the point where they could put a shovel again in the ground and that's the minimum.
Yeah.
So like part of the length of time for the project, I think, is the back and forth with the zoning and the planning and all that. And if it ends up with a zone change, it goes to the town board.
Right.
Where maybe if the community was involved earlier on, the whole process would be shorter.
I agree. And, and also I think it's important for us to let builders know early on if a project's not going to work. You know, there's nothing worse than having someone come and start investing a lot of money in our town and then getting angry because we say no. So the earlier, like I said, if you can get the builders or the developers involved.
And then the word gets around.
Right, oh, of course.
And then the developers are like, I have this awesome project, but I'm not putting it in Huntington because they're a pain in the butt.
Right, and, and it's true, no, it's true. And it's true. And some of that, you know, development brings money to our community. It builds, you know, it brings jobs, money, tourism, yeah, exactly. So we do have to just find a better way to do it. And like I said, I know with the project they're looking at in Melville, they've had a lot of listening sessions. It's been successful. There are still people who are not in favor, obviously, but, and it's being tweaked. And I think that really has helped a lot.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, we were at all of them.
Yeah.
It was great, it was really.
Yeah, they've done a good job with that.
And they were there to listen.
Yes, they really were.
Which was really great, yeah. All right, great. So school districts get a big part of our taxes that we collect. And then we feel that really the school district kind of operate as a silo separate from the town board. Yes, it's supposed to be that way. They're not supposed to be same governing body. But we feel like there's some maybe missed opportunities that the legislate, you know, our officials could explore in working together for the community. So is that something you'd be interested in partnering with the school districts as a board member if elected?
Absolutely. I, you know, one of, as I said earlier, one of the things I do is work with children.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the fact that I work with children so much, I also get to see a lot of the things that go on insofar as even the drug issues and the mental health issues. So I clearly want to work with the community on that, I and the school board on that. I've already reached out to some of the people on the school board. And I've also reached out to some of the people who deal with some of these children who have problems. I definitely think we need to work together. I don't know how we bridge the gap of the separatism between the two. I think that's something, I think one of the ways to do that though is, again, it's dialogue. It's all, it's all communication.
And then just brainstorming together.
Absolutely.
I know that, I was just wanting to think about this, we've been asking this question.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So there's some things popping into my head, but I know that the town has more and more been using South Huntington School District property to have some events.
Yes, they have.
So that I've noticed as something that's an improved collaboration over the years. But I think that we could go further.
I agree with you 100%. I think we need to go further. Even, you know, right now what's going on in Northport with them wanting to sell the buildings and the community came out very strong against the, I guess, some of the propositions in to build apartments. And I'm not at liberty to talk too much about that, but I do know that there are some people looking into other ways to deal with that.
Yeah.
That are from the town for options so that we don't, so that we don't have that issue in the community discord, you know, which I understand. It's some of those school buildings, they're just right in the middle of, you know, right in the middle of everything. So I don't know how you take them necessarily make them into apartments. But I know those are projects that I would be interested in helping focus on and see what we can do to resolve that for our community.
Yeah, and there's opportunity, there's big pieces aligned too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Like courage and they can make something really nice out of it.
You can make something very nice out of it, yeah.
And let the community like, yeah. All right, great. So speaking again about development, it just keeps happening. It's like the number one.
It's the big issue, exactly.
So what is the town board's influence over development, planning, zoning and projects in the town of Huntington? And I ask this because a lot of people in our group will comment and kind of like hold the town board accountable for certain things that are not necessarily in their purview, but yet, let's talk.
Right, so the, the town board elects people to the zoning board and the, you know, planning board by majority. So people get proposed. I know myself that I would look to appoint persons who feel the same way I do about development. The term is seven years. It's an autonomous board.
Do you think it's too long of a term?
You know, I'm not really sure. I wouldn't want to, I haven't been in, I don't know. I haven't been in town government enough to know, but I think, I'm not, I haven't. So I, I really don't know, but I do know that they, they get appointed. And they really do try to appoint, from what I'm told, people who are not lobbyists, people who are, you know, you want to appoint people who are somewhat like minded in terms of making sure that, you know, that everybody can work together. But you, but you, you know, I know that it's very important to them to, it's not people who are going to lobby for certain things. It has to be people who are independent, independent thinkers. Now, people may not always agree with what those people are doing or saying, you know. And I know that like Jerry Asher, he, you know, he was a judge. He's, he's a wonderful person and independent thinker. People don't always agree with what he, you know, feels on the, on the zoning board. But I've known him for many years and I know that there are very good people on those, on those planning and zoning boards. But the town, they're independent. So if a developer wants to do something that's not covered in the code, they have to go before one or both of those entities. If they want to change the zoning, then it goes to the town board. Then the town board has to vote on it. And I've made it clear.
And that's when they're in public hearing.
Right.
That's when the community goes, what the heck?
Right, what the heck? Right, right. And I, I've, I've, I believe that it's not, I'm not someone who's for large down zoning. So if they're coming before me and they want to take, you know, two acre property and do something where it's, you know, you know, one eighth of an acre and the community's not for it, it's not something I would propose or something I would support. You know, at one point they were talking about somebody, they, they put in plans for 86 apartments at classic galleries. Now, I just can't imagine doing that in Huntington Village. It just doesn't fit. You know, there's not enough parking as it is. So I, you know, so down zoning would not be something I would support.
Parking, which I, I don't, yeah, that's not currently.
Yeah.
That project needs a lot of zone changes.
Um, yeah, right.
Which is why it's not.
Which is why it's not, right, exactly.
The other influence, I believe that the town board has over, so planning and zoning are given, that they have laws, but the town board elects, you know, adopts these laws for these boards that give them a framework and parameters in which they can freely make decisions as long as it's within these, these parameters, right?
Yes, absolutely.
But those laws is something the town board can change.
Yes, the town board.
Yeah.
Yes, can modify.
Modify that. So that is an influential.
It is influential. And again, again, it's usually it's done after, you know, the public hearings and, and so it's not like the public's not included. However, I think one of the things that could be a little bit better is, and I'm, and again, I'm not criticizing, but it's a whole communication thing again. It's before you say, okay, here's a public hearing, let's make sure that the proper information is getting out to the public. But I'm a lawyer, so when you hear hearing, you automatically think something's getting decided that night. And, and like, and I think that's what happened a little bit at the A D U meeting.
Yeah.
When they heard public hearing, then you had different groups putting out different, I'll use the word propaganda, but it, you know, you know, signs. And, and then when people showed up, they showed up in droves. And some of the comments that were made didn't really even make sense. So people were not well informed about what they were, and people thought they were voting that night.
Right, well, to be fair, there have been a town board in the past that used to do things like that.
I, I'm, I know exactly what you're talking about.
So there's a reason why the residents are a little worried. It's like, okay, there's no, let's think about it. It's like, oh, okay, uh, okay, let's vote.
The last administration, especially years ago, and I won't, you know, was very liberal with apartments and all the things that people are fighting against now. So, you know, the project that's over on Pulaski where, you know, went up to the Supreme Court of the United States, you know.
The Mattock project.
Right, and people ask me all the time, what are you going to do about Mattock? I said, there's nothing we can do.
Literally, the Supreme Court said that has to go right there.
Supreme Court of the United States. And they, one of the justices even made a comment, made comments that if he found out that people on the town board were standing in the way, that they would, you know, be, you know, looking into it. And so it's a, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a done deal.
Yeah, the only reason.
But that was done a long time ago.
Yeah, it hasn't been built yet is because of the cost of the materials.
Right, the cost of the materials and, right, everything, yeah.
Something you have to restructure and that. But that's going to be, you know, there's, there's units in there dedicated for special needs.
Yes, yes. I think, yeah, I think that's great.
You know, autistic.
Autistic, right.
And, yeah, and, and it's all affordable, which is workforce housing essentially.
Exactly, it's workforce housing.
Low income.
Right.
But anyway.
And, and special need, I mean, I have a nephew who has spina bifida and special needs and so, yeah. And so I do think it's important. It's just, you know, we've got to make it work, yeah.
Yeah, because we have people that are differently able, but they can, they can take care of themselves in a room or apartment.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
But there are so few options for them.
They really are.
These are subsidized programs that the county pays into toward their rent.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
But it's important even as property owners and landlords that that's a consideration to consider offering your property for that as well, because it's a tremendous need too.
It is.
So speaking about affordable housing, I'm not starting off. The, the definition of affordable housing, like to just go over it, it's actually a federal HUD formula and it's called the Affordable Formula. And it is something that's set and it can't be changed. And it's based on 80% of the area median income. And then there's like little variances for your family size, how many new people in the family. So essentially, when we have these lobbies with the town, we post them and then they post what the rates are, some invariably residents going, that's not affordable.
That's not, yeah.
The word affordable in the English language is very subjective. So that's like, you know, one person's income or expenditures versus another's.
Right.
That's the difference in the affordability. So for this conversation, we're going to be talking about the HUD version of affordable housing, which essentially is more like workforce housing.
Right.
Not low income.
Right.
So the next question is, all the candidates have stated that they are against developing, but all have also stated they're in favor of creating housing for seniors and young adults who can't afford to stay in Huntington. What is your plan to accommodate both interest groups?
Again.
It's a good question.
It is a very good question. It's an excellent question. No, it's an excellent question. The issue is, again, it's really working with the community and working with the builders. We live in an expensive area.
Yeah.
We live in a place where our taxes are high, our school, our school taxes, everything is high. So I don't have the exact solution. I can't say to you, we can build there, we can build here. Because every time a project comes up, I mean, there's, the considerations are not only the community. It's what is the builder willing to build? What are the expenses and material? You know, what are the taxes going to be? Is he going to be willing to build houses that are going to cost less? And, you know, with, and when he's got to pay all the expenses of getting it done or she, you know.
Or she.
So again, it, it comes down to working with the community, finding out what the community will tolerate and what a builder will develop.
Yeah.
I, I do think it's so important. I just, my experience so far has been that our community, although they say they need it and they want it, they're not in favor of it when the projects get proposed.
So guys, okay. So if something comes up for a public hearing and you really support it, you have to speak up.
Exactly, exactly.
Every one of you has to speak up to go, I'm in favor of this. I like this because if, you know, this is why, one of the reasons why we found out we don't have a parking garage yet.
Right.
Same thing.
Yeah, well, every.
Only people that are yelling about that they don't want it are the ones that come to the meetings.
That's right. And, and, and the parking garage, I mean, they were able to secure funding for a parking garage and they came out in droves against it. So when there was a plan put in place saying, okay, everybody wants parking here, let's put a parking garage, everybody came out against it, so.
And now the joke's on us because the cost of putting up a garage is probably five times more than it was back then.
Exactly, it is.
And our bond will be much higher.
Yeah, and I looked, actually, I, when I, when parking came up, I did just some research on green parking and asphalt versus, you know, versus concrete. And, and it's, it's, it's a difficult, and if you want to do it green, where you have better water runoff, it's so much more expensive. And so, you know, because I know that there's been some discussion about turning the Elks property into a parking area. I know that, you know, even Ed Smith talked about that. The problem is again the same. You know, I mean, if a developer bought, you know, the question was, why doesn't the town buy it and make it into a parking lot? Well, most people in the town don't want it to be a parking lot.
And not only that, it comes off the tax roll.
Right, exactly.
Then we lose tax revenue.
Exactly, and somebody already bought it. So somebody bought the property. So then we would have to probably pay more for it and then have to develop it. I mean, it would be, you know, I guess if a developer was willing to buy it and use it as some sort of parking lot where he could do paid parking for some of the people who live in apartments down there, that might not be a bad solution. But again, if he's buying that property in Huntington with those taxes and that expense, he's not necessarily going to make enough money unless it's a big parking garage.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, those are issues. I mean, Huntington is such a beautiful place and we want to keep our, you know, our, it looking that way. And then, you know, parking garage kind of sticks in people's craw and I get it, you know, I do, I get that. You know, I feel bad for other businesses a lot because you go down there and, and there's not a lot of parking. But I know that one of the, you know, the, the parking meters, there was a problem at one point where some of the people in apartments were leaving their cars long term in places.
Oh, really?
And the parking meters, one of the reasons, you know, the parking meters work is because then people can't leave their cars, you know, overnight and take a parking or week because they're going away and take a parking or in the municipal parking. I know that people complain about, especially some of the older folks, about the meters themselves and how hard they are to use. We do have the passport parking thing, which helps, but people who don't use apps. You know, I know that we've talked about the possibilities of finding better ways than for some of the older community, you know, to have, to be able to get parking with some kind of a pass, you know, when they aren't trying to do. I know, I even have trouble doing it on my phone. And I'm like, yeah, just use the meter, yeah. So I never have, you know, I, so I just use the, the pass. But, but there has to be a way to resolve that for, for some of the adult, you know, older community.
And, and for the record, 100% of the times that I go into the village, 100%, I find parking.
I do too. I have to say the same thing.
Literally, 100%.
Agreed, I do too.
And not only do I find parking, I find parking within, definitely within a block of my destination. And if I have to park a block away, that's a far, that's far.
I agree with you. I've, I have the same experience. I generally don't have a problem finding parking. Maybe it's a little further away than I want it to be, but, you know, I can use the walking. So that's all good, you know?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, and then, but I do see, I don't go down there at nine at night on a Saturday night when the Paramount's out, having the show. I don't try and go for nine.
No, yeah, and, and the Paramount, you know, they do a good job with that. Big parking lot and the overflow lot. But again, you know, the other thing that we're very fortunate about in communities today is you could take an Uber, you know? And, and then you don't have to worry about parking. And then also if people are having a drink or two, we don't have to worry about that either. So there are a lot of options if you don't want to park. But I agree with you, I have rarely ever had a problem parking.
Do you remember the shuttle they tried?
Yeah, they tried the shuttle.
Oh, boy.
Their shuttle's there.
A lot of money and sat empty for a very long time. Nobody, everybody wants to drive.
They don't want a shuttle. Yeah.
They just don't, anyway.
I prefer not to drive, but the shuttle was a little limited and stuff to timing. So people don't want to be stuck, you know, but there are other options. But, but I do have to say, same as you, that I haven't really experienced where I can't park it down there.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, I mean, I want to say it could be worse, but it could be, you know.
It could be worse.
I don't live there, so I'm not there during the absolute peak hours all the time. So don't kill a messenger.
Don't kill a messenger, exactly.
But, you know, okay, all right. All right, so are you in favor of piercing the tax cap if elected?
Barring an emergency, no, I would not be in favor of piercing the tax cap, so.
Okay, great. Revitalization, once again, and always.
And once again and always, yeah.
So Huntington Station has an opportunity, well, we have been given a $10 million grant to do this downtown revitalization initiative by New York State, which is, we suspect because we got the sewer approval.
Yes.
So the sewers is coming in Huntington Station.
Supposed to break ground in February, yeah.
Yeah, super excited because it's a few years, I live right there, so I can be super excited. It's my neighborhood. And then this will spark lots of development because right now they can't do things there because the property lot sizes are so small and there's no parking and there's water credits and you can only have one bathroom and all that stuff. So once you have sewers in, then you can do basically more dense.
Absolutely, more density, exactly.
And give you more housing units and put a nice thing down there that holds more than just a little hair salon.
Exactly, well, yeah, and we need to.
And everybody needs hair salons.
Yes.
We do, and we have a great selection of hair salons. I'm not dissing hair salons, but.
I know, I know. Yeah, and if we work, I mean, we need to work with the I D A also to work, to help businesses so we can get more small businesses down there. Yeah, and, and, you know, and I know people talk a lot about safety and safety is a big issue. And, you know, the, the second precinct does a really good job. They really do, they have those, also those sessions that I've been to where they tell the community what's going on. And we need to continue to work with them to make sure everybody feels safe in every community, you know. And I think, you know, once the sewers are, you know, going in, I think that's, that's going to be a great head start for revitalizing the Huntington Station community. And I know like the, the, our second precinct's been great too about going around and, you know, going to various shops, vape shops and nail salons to try to cut back on some of the activities that are going on in those. And I know that as well, you know, unfortunately, some of the stores in, in Huntington Station aren't exactly, or restaurants aren't exactly what they purport to be. So you want to, the activities that are sometimes going on there. I know that the precinct is really working on those, those issues to help. People feel like they want, you know, it's the gateway into our community when you think about it. You come right off of, of the highway and you're coming through Huntington Station to get to the downtown Huntington area. And I think it, it's absolutely, it's a wonderful area and it just needs that revitalization, revitalization and help. Yeah, I mean, they've been working on the parks since our new administration's been in.
Yes.
Also garbage, garbage was a big issue because the garbage men were being told they didn't have to pick up under the prior administration because there was, they were, they were telling the prior administration that they were concerned about being in certain communities at certain times.
What?
So, yeah.
I never heard that, wow.
So the garbage is all being picked up.[1714.32]
Yeah.
Um, you know, they've been told you pick up everybody's garbage, you know, and so, so, you know, and again, it's not that I'm trying to criticize, I just know that there's been a real push to try it and make Huntington Station into the beautiful community it should be.
Right.
And it is, but to improve and help.
Note, there's, there's a, there's, there's a concern where gentrification's gonna happen, which means that the all this new development is gonna push out the existing residents. Because, okay, great, you have a, you have a thriving small business in this unit right now. Well, we're gonna move your business right now temporarily and we're gonna knock this down, build something new. Well, now, now you're priced out and you can't get back into your space, where the community relied on you being there, you know, forever.
Oh, sure.
And then your business closes. And now what? You know? So we, we, and some of that, you you know, we wanna minimize that.
Of course we do. We don't wanna take the people who live there and have lived there their whole lives and and price them out of where they live. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And again, that's a concern of making sure that whatever housing and stuff that is established is is, well, and I I don't, accessible, exactly, is a better word than affordable, but accessible. And also helping people to, I I also think that, you know, if the, it, when they are able to bring in, for example, more businesses, because now they have sewers and stuff, you know, that gives people also opportunity
Right.
to open or reopen, you know, businesses. And that community relies a lot on their fellow community members with their specialty restaurants and their, you know, and their specialty stores. I would never wanna see that go away.
Yeah.
So it is working with people in in, you know, working with the IDA, working with whatever money we can get, whether it be county or state, into the community, to keep the community what, you know, still a, you know, a a community where people who, you know, are of different ethnic backgrounds, et cetera, can still be there, you know?
Yeah. I think that when the time comes that the town board, not town board, but town,
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's the board or maybe human services.
Yeah, I think there's a bunch of different organizations, yeah.
That they need to make sure that every possible resource for for these business owners.
Is there. I agree.
For them, that they're aware of it.
I agree. And that they're aware of it. That's the key.
Of it, because there's so many things that people just aren't even aware of. And there's a lot of opportunity there that might help them be able to stay.
That's so true. It's so true. And I know that the town does put things out on their websites, but I don't know that it's always accessible to everybody.
Right.
Right. So I think that there has to be a better way to communicate information to people about what's up.
Yeah.
Like Huntington matters, exactly.
But there's also, you know, something about visiting them.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Many of them.
Absolutely. And and even like for jobs and job postings and making sure that people understand that, you know, and there, the jobs are made available on the website, but people don't always understand. That might mean you need to take, you know, civil service tests to get those jobs. And and so, I think that their community outreach needs to be better. So now, as you're revitalizing the area, you know, making sure people understand that those kinds of opportunities are available. I also think it's important to work with kids to show them different opportunities. You know, maybe not, you know, maybe, whether it be Huntington Station, Cold Spring Harbor, wherever it is, not everybody wants to go to college, but there are other opportunities in fire departments and, you know, um, you know, using their hands, construction, plumbing. There's so many opportunities that, you know, you know, if we should, and that starts with the school district, when we're talking about the school district and educating kids.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times.
Equal choice, like that everybody's pushing so hard for college.
Yes.
And let's give these kids equal.
Absolutely.
Bring in some, some unions too, some of the trade unions.
Oh, yeah, the trade unions are great. Yeah, absolutely.
Start down, yeah.
You know, I've done some mentoring programs over the years and with mentoring, you know, working with kids to show them opportunities, to show them what people do in their work lives, that it might be different from anything they ever thought about doing before.
Yeah.
So, you know, those things are great too.
What about the Take Your Child to Work Day?
We still do it in the courts.
You do say that.
Yeah, we do. We take our kids to work. Yeah, it's fun.
Yeah.
And it's fun. It's fun to watch all the little ones run around, you know? I also am very fortunate as an advocate for children. Some of the kids I've represented in the past have asked me to be an intern in my office. So, I take those kids as interns and we, I take them around the court. You know, I had a girl who's in first year, second year of Old Me Now, come to me and say, you know, I love the way you handled my family, would, can I intern? I think I wanna go to law school.
Wow.
Um and, you know, financially, she's gonna have a struggle getting there, but she's, you know, doing what she needs to do to work towards that, so. But I've taken interns a lot, you know, whether it be from even high school kids. Um I have a friend who's a tutor who's helped me um with a couple of my clients to tutor them. She tutors them at a lesser rate, you know, 'cause you have the kid who's in Brentwood and is just struggling because he, his mom and dad both work constantly and he's gotta watch his siblings and, you know, there's that math class that he can't get tutoring for 'cause he can't, he, you know, can't get out of the house. And his parents, quite frankly, can't afford it. So, I paid for it, but she gives me a great rate. So, you know, it's, you know, 'cause it's all about if we're ed- if we educate you in whatever it is you want to be educated in, you know, it gives you the opportunities that you might not otherwise have. So, it's important. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right. So, do you know the Conti Community Center in Huntington Station? This was the old Armory Building, which is sitting vacant next to Manor Field Park and our gorgeous Spray Park.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
That was on the list from twenty twenty-one question.
Oh, yeah. It's been around a while. Yeah, well, the Spray Park's finally done.
So now, still the Conti Center.
Yeah.
It has funding sitting there.
Yep.
And it's just uh very frustrating that it has not been made a reality. So, um.
And, yeah, we've talked about the, oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I I know myself, I want to. I think the Conti Center will be an amazing complete, if it's, when it's completed, an amazing step in revitalization. So, I will do whatever I can in in looking for, you know, funding and trying to, and to get that up, you know, to get that going. It really needs it. And it's, I do think the community needs it. And I think it will be an extremely positive step, you know?
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so.
Some, you know, like the uh, the Green Lawn, uh American Agent.
Yeah.
They need a home.
Yeah, they do. Yeah.
There's, there's another thing that we learned about recently, that they lost their building and they need a new place too. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, crime and safety. What can or will you do to make the town safer for everyone?
Well, again, work with the second precinct, work with the community. You know, there's so many great programs out there, if we could take advantage of, that that will help. Education, I I think starting with our youth is a really important thing, making sure drug education, um making sure that, you know, again, you're keeping kids busy. One of the problems is, you know, it's, it starts sometimes, you know, with safety with the younger um people. They are bored, they've got nothing to do, and then they get sometimes mixed up in the wrong things. So, the whole mentoring idea, um we have some great facilities in Huntington that work with people with drug addiction, mental health issues, but we don't have as many for kids. And I think that's super important. I I mean, I work with kids all the time who have issues and that's one of the big problems. I work with girls who've been trafficked. We don't have anything available for them. We can put them into a facility, they can leave anytime they want. You know, I had an experience with a thirteen-year-old who was being trafficked, went to a facility, we found her a good place to be, and she left. She was there about a week, left, disappeared for ten days. She was involved, you know, in a gang house for ten days. So, I have no idea what happened to her while she was out, but she came back and I think she realized that she wanted to be someplace safe. Um so we got her in someplace safe, but a lot of it is then now, mental health.
Right.
You know, I, somebody said to me, well, she doesn't have mental health issues. And I said, what are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Not only trauma, you know, uh, you know, defiant disorder, you know, she would get angry. And and you just, you know, you have to educate, help, and, you know, get, make sure that our police department's involved and work with them. And, you know, safety, you know, safety also involves making sure that our roads are safe, making sure that, you know, we're, you know, issuing tickets when they need to be done, lighting, yeah, lighting.
Lighting.
One of the things Huntington Station needs is more lighting, you know, because, you know, like anybody else, the 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 streets, even just for crossing, you wanna make sure, you know, you've got enough lighting. So, I mean, there's a multitude of projects that can be done for public safety. Like I said, I think our police department's doing a great job with what they're doing, with their outreaches and their trying to crack down on what's going on with um, you know, um the vape shops, et cetera. You know, because the drugs and the fentanyl issue is just such a big deal. And I know that there's a big push, you know, that, you know, because Huntington opted out of dispensaries. Um, I'm not in favor of dispensaries right in Huntington, and I've been criticized for it recently, but that's okay. Um, I I just, unfortunately, I think, you know, there's certain gateways. And unfortunately, I I would have to see, it would have to be so heavily regulated before I could feel comfortable knowing that, you know, we have dispensaries here in in the village or, you know, that people can easily access. And I know we have liquor stores. Somebody said to me, oh, but we have liquor stores and kids can get liquor. And I get it, I understand that. But the other problem is, we don't have sufficient tests either. So if somebody's driving while under the influence of marijuana, there's no way to test it. You could see it's in the system. Um but it could have been there thirty days ago. It didn't necessarily happen that day. So I know there are people working on that. We talk about that. Scientists, yeah, we need our scientists to develop those tests, because.
Dangerous. I mean, I can't, I can't, I just.
It is. And and, you know, it's interesting, recently the state put out, you know, or the city put out.
I'm standing next to his car.
And you smell when you're walking through town.
And there's a kid in the car.
Right. And you're, right. And you're walking through town. And just like secondhand smoke from a cigarette.
And and the windows are up.
Yeah.
You know, boop, they pull out of the parking lot and they go, I'm like, ah!
Right, right. And and it's not.
Just like six pack.
Right, exactly. Exactly. And it's, again, it's the secondhand smoke too. Think about it. I mean, you're not supposed to smoke your cigarettes in front of your kids in a car, closed car.
Yeah.
But you walk around town and you smell, you know, marijuana everywhere you go. And, you know, it's interesting that that's what's being leased with fentanyl. There's other drugs too that's being leased. So, on the one hand, I say to myself, well, if it's regulated, it's probably better. But it's really the kids who are getting, a lot of the kids who are getting that. Adults are too, um getting it leased, but.
Yeah, done. You have to go. Okay. You have ten minutes? Okay.
All right.
Okay, great. She could, well, we can still go anyway if she has to leave. Um, okay, great. So beaches, let's talk about the environment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what will you propose or do to help get our beaches usable after it rains? It is said that toxic rainwater runoff is responsible for most of our beach closures. How do you plan to address this?
Well, obviously, water safety is a huge issue. I know that. I went over to the Northport Facility um to see how they're dealing with, you know, clean water. Because, you know, some of that gets dumped into the, into the, into our um bay, you know, into our um sound. Um, I I I absolutely want to work with clean water. I think that one of the things we have to do is get money, again, more funding. And I would rally for as much funding as we can get to make sure the seawalls. Right. It's gotta be grants.
It's gotta be grants.
And I I know that um I would work, I've worked with people get, trying to get grants for other things before. I know that um, you know, every, it, infrastructure, infrastructure has a big effect on our water. So, you know, if we got money and we can put in more catch basins and work on making sure the seawall structures are safe, like in Asher Oak, and so that we can limit that, you know? And even, you know, roads, everything we do affects the water, the war, the runoff from the on roads. I know that, you know, um Andre went up to um Albany and he lobbied for money and he got some and he was able to buy more equipment, used, even refurbished equipment for less money. So he's been able to pave so many more of our roads so that we don't have those issues where you have the cracked roads and the water's seeping in. So, you know, I know.
My road was repaid.
It was. The one up from my house was too, up on Broadway. He does a great job. He, that that highway department's amazing.
Yeah.
But, you know, so, I mean, it's just really trying to work with, again, the town, the county, the state, to get what we need so we can make the necessary repairs and keep making sure our water's safe. You know, I, you know, I know there's a lot of flack about the sewage bill not getting passed recently.
That's the county.
And that's, that's county. And as I understand it, there were some issues with what, the way it was written and how the money was being applied. Of course, both sides are fighting over why it didn't get passed.
Yeah.
I don't, I think everybody wants it. It's just, it's a matter of making sure that money's going to sewers and not necessarily as much going to, you know, the enhanced septics. So.
But it makes sense now that we found out, and we're talking to Tom Donnelly yesterday, who sponsored that? Who wrote that? It was uh Fred Thiel from the East End.
Right.
Where his community can't really get many sewers.
Right, right.
Because of the way his community is set up.
Right.
So, his residents all need the septics.
They need the enhanced septics.
They need the upgraded septic.
Right.
Opposed to everybody west of him.
Wants, needs sewers, right.
So that's where that percent formula, why we would submit that.
Right.
And uh, so now they are working with, that we've talked to everybody already.
Yes, you have. Yes, you have.
And they're working with um uh Fred to revise, see if they can revise it and make it a little bit more um.
Right.
Whatever they're gonna do to make it give a little bit more to the sewer side.
Exactly. And I think it was, it was, I'm I'm saddened by, but I guess that's part of the process, the fact that they've made it into a political issue versus really trying to um make it work. You know, it, you know, it became, it became a big hotbed and, you know,
Yeah.
wanting to get it done before the November election and wanting to make sure it was done right. So, you know, unfortunately, there's been some fighting over that, but um.
Match is gonna still be there anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
But.
Absolutely.
Also, the fact that they can't revise it right now because if Fred has to do it, he's out of the state. And state session doesn't start until January.
Exactly. It doesn't start till January.
So they won't, there won't be, yeah, yeah, exactly. I get it.
So it won't be on this ballot, but everybody wants.
About it.
Yes.
From all people involved, yeah.
It is great. It's great that the public knows and understands it.
Yeah.
Right? You know, so you guys are doing a great thing by making sure all the information is out there. Yeah. Oh, I am too.
Thoughts on it.
Yeah. And it was fascinating when I went to the Northport Facility and they were showing me how they're introducing.
I would love to be one of those.
Oh, it's it's fascinating. And they were showing me how they're putting iron into their, their process of of, you know, um trying to clear up the water and reduce the nitrogen. And the iron helps to introduce more oxygen and they're showing, and of course, I was, you know, they're so scientific, I was so lost. But I was watching them do it. I was watching them, actually, they, in one section, they were putting it in and and they measure and they test and,
Yeah.
you know, so they're always trying to.
So what's coming back out is clean.
Is cleaner. And what they're doing, and what mar- what they're doing with the oyster beds.
Yes.
And the sea kelp. The oyster beds, you know, how oysters will filter the water. Oh, sorry, sugar kelp. Sugar kelp. What they're doing is they, they grow sugar kelp. Our our maritime guys are growing sugar kelp. And then the sugar kelp has to be cut down, cut back before boating season, because it can interfere with navigation, right?
Okay.
So, they cut it, they take it and then they dry it.
Right.
And when they dry it, then they actually grind it so people can use it as fertilizer.
I'll take that.
Right. And it's, and it's.
I buy that now.
Exactly. And they actually give it away. And it's, and it's, um, the, you know, they, they give it to the community, which is great. But this, the sugar kelp also helps to filter the water, puts, takes, you know, puts more oxygen into the water. It was fascinating to learn that, but.
Everything we need.
Yeah, exactly.
Waterways healthy again. All right, great. And we already did the parking.
Yeah, we did.
Definitely did the parking. So, any closing message you have for our neighbors?
Yeah, just that I, you know, I certainly hope that people will consider voting for me um in this election cycle. I think I have all the qualifications. I think I have the energy, the drive.